Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District One. Glenn Davis, District Two. Bruce Huff, District Three. Toya Tucker, District Four. Charmaine Crabbe, District Five. Gary Allen, Mayor Pro Tem and District Six. Mimi Woodson, District Seven. Walker Garrett, District Eight. Judy Thomas, Post Nine at Large Counselor. John House, Post Ten at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Well, good evening and welcome everybody to the May 25th meeting of the Columbus City Council. We've got kind of a full agenda, but it's also full of some celebratory events going on as well. We will begin as we always do by asking God's blessing on these proceedings, and I'd like to invite Reverend Jimmy McElrath from The Ridge Church of Columbus, Georgia. Welcome Pastor. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you for having me, and let's pray together. Almighty and everlasting God, in whom we find our life and our purpose and salvation, we're reminded that you created us for yourself so that our hearts are restless until we find our rest in you. So God, help us to remain faithful in our service to you. May we find the strength that comes from understanding our purpose so that nothing would hinder us from knowing and doing your will. And God be our guide in this meeting, and we ask for your blessings on this great city. Enable us to do the work that you have called us to do, that we would not fear the problems that are in front of us, but we would rather seek your wisdom to overcome any obstacles we may face. We place everything we have in your hands, God, with your strength and power. We move forward with the tasks that you have committed to us. So God, we give you this time, we give you our best, we give you our service, and most of all, we give you our hearts. We pray this through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Pastor, thank you so much for being here this evening, and thank you too, because I know COVID has been a very, very tough ordeal for clergy as they have continued to try to create and maintain contact with their parishioners. So, good job of leadership, and we thank you for all that you do in our community.
Well, thank you for the support and the guidance that comes from this council.
Thanks, sir. All right, if you would, please. In the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from May 11. Motion from the Mayor Pro Tem, second from Counselor Tucker. Any edits, any deletions, any additions to the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, they are approved. Going to give a quick update on COVID-19. Before we do though, we want to make mention one more time of the momentous event that most of us had, well, all of us had an opportunity, and most of us took advantage of that opportunity to witness when Colonel Ralph Puckett was awarded the Congressional Medal of Honor on Friday. Incredibly selfless, humble man, brought so much credit to the United States military and by extension, thankfully to us in Columbus, Georgia. He was just a perfect choice and a wonderful recipient, and he's so humble, I know we are going to plan, or actually, there are individuals planning a sort of a celebration here. He's only good for one. He doesn't want to be made a big fuss over more than once. So, just kind of keep your ears to the ground, and I'm sure you will hear more about that as time goes on. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to basically say the same thing you said. It was an incredibly moving event and worthwhile event, and I appreciate the work of all those people that went into ensuring that Ralph got safely to Washington and back. Well deserved, he truly is an humble man, and as I've told him, if there's ever been a great American, it's him. So thrilled to see him get that award and for all of us to have a chance to celebrate it with him.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on, we've got, we'll give you a quick COVID update. I'd be glad when the day comes if we don't start our meetings with these things, but there has been a lot going on, there's been a lot of vaccines made available. Columbus, Georgia has seen about 92,000 doses go in arms. We have about 52,000, I think, are fully vaccinated, so that puts us at around 25%, 24, 25% of our population. We're getting there, but we still need to try to provide some education for individuals that still have questions, lingering questions. We understand that those questions still exist. There is a community organization that's been working hard, and it's in the process of trying to identify the best way to be able to get some of this information out and the best way to publicize it, excuse me, and to let people know fact versus some of the myth that they have heard. And that group is in the process of putting together an information system that will help us do that. We did, my office, when the numbers dropped below the threshold of 100 cases per 100,000 individuals over a two-week period, we suspended the mask mandate. That is pending city council approval of rescinding the ordinance, which will be on first reading tonight. As always happens, as soon as we rescind, as soon as we suspended it, the number of cases per 100,000 individuals bumped back up over 100. We're aware of that, but we also are tempering that with the understanding that with the availability of the vaccine and the length of time that it has been available for people who want it to get it, and with the concerted efforts that are underway to get it to the remaining areas that might be underserved or might not have heard of the availability of the vaccine, it's not likely we will put that back in place unless we see some kind of very dramatic increase in the numbers. The hospitalization rate has remained fairly flat. It's actually gotten a little better over the last few days. So we, I got to tell you, we're not through it yet, because if you have not been vaccinated, you are still urged, not only by us, but also by the CDC and the Department of Public Health, to continue to wear masks until such time as you're able to get your vaccine or until such time as you decide to do so. For those of us that have been fully vaccinated, the science tells us that we are extremely unlikely to contract COVID, and we are just as unlikely to transmit it. However, I will suggest to those of you, I've got mine, if you are in an environment where you know you're going to be in close quarters, you don't know who around you hasn't been vaccinated, I would encourage you to wear your mask as well. So we're getting very close to being able to put this in, completely in the rearview mirror, but for now, I would urge you to do what you've been doing, and that is to continue to look after one another. All right, next on my agenda, we love hearing about the great things our employees do. And the interesting thing is, it doesn't surprise us, but it's really nice when the public reaches out and points out something that one of our employees has done. I heard three such occasions today. One is our deputy city manager Lisa Goodwin, who is lauded for her efforts in making sure that there's seamless communication with individuals down in historic district. And another is a letter that came to me from a young woman that wanted to do nothing more than just let us know what a great human being some of our public safety officers are. So I'm going to call to the podium, the young lady is Lauren Chambers, and I think she's here. If she is, I'd love for her to come up, and then I'd love for, I'm going to read the names off here, Police Department Sergeant Florence, Corporal Moody, Chief of Staff Katina Williams, Officer Miranda, and then the Muskogee County Sheriff's Office Corporal McPhail, Corporal Brown, Corporal Jones, Sergeant Byrd. If you'd all make your way to the podium. Again, this is, you know, this is another one of those instances, we see our sheriff's deputies, we see our police officers in situations, yeah, give them a hand. These individuals are always there when the 911 call goes across the telephone line. They do their job all the time. You see some pictures that will be kind of cycling through as I read a portion of this letter, but it just makes us feel so good that our law enforcement officers are public servants. They're not just LEOs, they are public servants, and they're always looking for a way to try to help the public. So I'm not going to read the introduction part of the letter, but I'm going to skip down here to the, sort of the meat of it. It said, "Recently, AmeriGroup collaborated with Atlanta Fire and Safety, Columbus Police Department, and Muskogee County Sheriff's Office for Buckle Up for Safety Event. This event was a drive-through car seat safety event. The event was open to the community to come out and get free car seats for their own children to gain the understanding of the importance of correct seats, of how correct seats are essential to responsible drivers. The event was held in March at the Public Safety Building in Columbus, where over 100 car seats were given to families in Fountain City. With all AmeriGroup events, we are intentional to host inclusive events that reach and welcomes everyone no matter what potential barriers may come. We did not know that we were going to be met with a situation that would turn into their biggest blessing. We had a family of six that did not speak English. The family had an app on their phone that would translate the English language into Spanish. In this case, the application was not able to work properly, and potentially, we had a barrier of communications if we were trying to meet the needs of this family who needed four car seats." CPD Sergeant Florence, Corporal Moody, Chief of Staff Williams, Officer Miranda, and in the MCSO Corporal McPhail, Corporal Brown, Corporal Jones, and Sergeant Byrd stepped up and answered the call. I informed Corporal Brown, we had a family that we needed to communicate to, she responded immediately and began assisting them with the paperwork and communicating in some Spanish so they could assist with some of the items. Corporal McPhail and Sergeant Byrd assisted with pulling the family to the side so they could be moved to the front closer to the instructor and where they would not be rushed or feel overwhelmed when making sure all items of the deliverables were completed properly. As for the entire CPD team, I shared with Chief of Staff Williams the situation, and she worked closely in reaching out to Officer Miranda, who devoted himself working with the family, translating the entire presentation to the family regarding the car seat safety and the car seat installation for the family. Sergeant Florence and Corporal Moody endured, ensured that every single person was cared for, safe, and that not one person was left without a car seat for their children. In closing, I hope that the entire leadership of this city, of the agency's name, know how amazing these individuals are that I've named. We live in a world where people at times can waver, they're not always transparent and honest, and at times fearful of being bold or different. In this case, I, as a community partner and a citizen of this community, wanted to acknowledge the actions of these officers. I have worked with them for some time, and I've seen them when the cameras are gone, and they are who they say they are. Their words and actions line up each time. They all demonstrated answering the call for the community, easy-to-do business, working in ethics and integrity, and being fair and kind to those in need. I hope that the leadership of our great city will recognize these officers as dynamic superheroes in our community, and I am forever grateful for each of them as we all work together in Columbus." Welcome, Lauren.
I'm so happy to take the mask off. Good evening, I want to say to the council, to Mayor Henderson, I cannot tell y'all enough how in the eight years I've been working with AmeriGroup, it has been a pleasure to work with Columbus Police Department and Muskogee County Sheriff's Office. We've done a lot in this tri-city area to answer the call, and I will tell you this, it was very overwhelming. You know, a lot of our events are open to the community, we don't know who's coming, but we know we want to answer the call to the community. And to see a family that could not speak English clearly had a need with all these kids, and we're trying to make sure that we keep them safe so that they can go where they need to go in the city of Columbus, and immediately, these officers behind me answered the call, they immediately went into action of how can we figure this out? And so, I thank each and every one of you for that. It was just a pleasure to work with you all, so I sincerely mean it from my heart. People take time to tell the bad, but it was important that we told the good, and so I just want to recognize, where is Councilman House? He came, him and his wife. Thank you so much for coming. To Councilman Huff, thank you again, I texted him immediately. And to you, Mayor Henderson, thank you anytime that I send an email to tell you something great that's going on in this city, I just appreciate that you give us that space. So thank you again to these amazing officers.
Thank you, Lauren. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Lauren Chambers and the officers. Lauren immediately texts me to tell me, because she always invites me to everything, and I come when I'm not busy. I was working, and I got a text message on how well everything went, and the effort that you all always put into every event that goes on in public safety. So I want to personally say thank you, and for you all to continue doing what you're doing, and then thank you to the mayor and his office. I got the information over there, I worked through my office, through the clerk's office, through Deputy Clerk Lindsey McLemore, and then it went from there over to the mayor's office, and then the mayor took it from there and told me, "Don't worry about it, we'll take care of it." But thank you all so very much. Anything I can do ever to help, let me know. Thank you.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor, and I just want to thank you to all of you as well. I see you at lots of things, and you're always working hard and taking care of the community, and thank you for that.
Thanks, sir. Chief of Staff Williams, you want to say anything, or does anybody have anything they want to say?
I'll just say thank you. We appreciate Lauren partnering with the police department. I mean, every chance she get to call us and get us involved in some community activity, she'll make that call, and we step up and step in and help her out. Just want to thank Lauren and the city council.
If you could, the rest of you just at least come up and introduce yourselves so we know who you are behind those masks.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Sergeant Angela Florence with the Columbus Police Department, and it's a pleasure and privilege anytime we're able to work with the community. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Command Sergeant Larry Marshall, I'm representing the sheriff's office. The gentlemen that's in that scene and helping out, they're actually working on other things at this time, still helping the community, but we appreciate all the city council and all the efforts you put in to ensure that things like this have been viewed and seen by the community. So we appreciate you and thank you.
Officer Julio Miranda, just a pleasure to be here, and thank you for allowing us to help you take care of the citizens.
Well, thank all of you, you make us proud every day, and we're very grateful for the way you do your jobs, and I think it's awesome that the public has an opportunity to see the human beings in the uniform behind the badge. And Lauren, we thank you and AmeriGroup for everything that y'all do throughout the community. You're always trying to make this a safer place to live. We appreciate it. Thank y'all. Okay. Next, we have an opportunity to do something we don't get to do as much as we'd like, that's for sure. We get an opportunity to celebrate a champion. So I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Allen, and I'm going to ask representatives of the Columbus River Dragons, Jeff Croup, Scott Brand, Jerome Bouchard, if you would, come up to the podium. Y'all can clap, the River Dragons are champions.
Thank you, Mayor. It's a pleasure to present this proclamation, to recognize the team. I'm going to try to do this a little different, to avoid embarrassing myself in pronouncing the names of the team members, and to avoid hurting anybody's feelings, I'm going to ask the coach if he could help me with these names, and maybe introduce the team members once they, once we get, once I finish this proclamation. So, the proclamation reads as follows. Whereas amidst a global pandemic that challenged professional sports to operate on April 17, 2021, the Columbus River Dragons were recognized as the regular season champions of the FPHL in the 2021 season with an 11-5 win at the Columbus Civic Center. Whereas on April 30, 2021, the Columbus River Dragons claimed victory in the best-of-five championship series over the Elmyro Enforcers to win the Ignite Cup three games to none, including an 8-1 victory in the final game of the series. Whereas the goaltender number one, Jared Rutledge, led the FPHL with eight regular season and three playoff wins to stop 94 of 100 shots faced in the, in over 200 minutes of championship playoff hockey. Whereas forward number 12, Connor Frye, co-led the Ignite Cup playoffs with three goals in three games, and whereas forward number 17, Austin Day, co-led the Ignite Cup playoffs with five assists in three games. And whereas the team comprised of team owner Jeff Croup, president and general manager Scott Brand, head coach Jerome Bouchard, assistant coach Brent Sherwood, and I'm going to let you help me with the rest of the names, if you would. Whereas the team's character, class, and determination set an example for the community and represented the city of Columbus proudly all season long en route to their championship. And whereas the mayor and members of council and the city manager Isaiah Hughley recognized the Columbus River Dragons players, coaches, and staff for their accomplishments in organizing and executing a successful hockey season with spectator attendance, home games, and winning the Ignite Cup on Civic Center ice in 2021. Now therefore, Mayor Skip Henderson of Columbus, Georgia does hereby proclaim April 30, 2021 as Columbus River Dragons' Day.
First of all, thank you so much for having us here. Start off with, we have our owner, Jeff Croup. President and general manager Scott Brand. Got our radio guy, media specialist Zach DeBozar, and then we got Shannon Rutledge, our assistant GM, and Diego Wilson, do-it-all guy. But Scott, me and Jeff.
First of all, it's an honor. We appreciate everything, and we had a heck of a team this year and won all the fights, which is important, I know, and, but what we got to say is that we'd never be in this position, Mayor, if, we talked about the great police officers we have in the community, if it wasn't for the building and you allowing the building to work with us. There were some moments there, we weren't sure the season was going to get going, there was a moment there we didn't know if we were going to have ice, but we'd be, if we didn't say a big thank you to Rob and his crew down there at the Civic Center and then all the help and direction you all gave, real blessing that we were able to get through this year. So we do want to make sure that we add Rob in the Civic Center and the city as part of this championship. You know, we're sorry about the dye we put in some of the fountains there to celebrate, but that'll come out. But we really appreciate the honor, and of course, we're hoping to be back in three months with a baseball championship, so.
Anybody else got anything?
Just again, a big thank you, it's an honor, and we'll see you in three months for a baseball championship, and we'll see you in 12 months for another hockey championship. Appreciate it, thank you.
Guys, before you sit down, I'm going to bring your proclamations to you, but I want to point something out. You guys are going to forever go down in history as one of the champions of the pandemic, because it takes so much extra effort and so much more pressure on you to try to stay focused, do all the things you need to do to keep your players healthy, and then still go out there and play at a high level. We're just, Columbus is extremely proud of you, and I hope everybody's at Golden Park on, it's the 4th, right, of June?
June 4th exhibition game, June 11th is regular season, yes.
11th is the opening day. We'll be there. So hold on, congratulations, let me bring you to you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you so much. Get in there for pictures.
Normally we'd have champagne, we'd all be drinking out of the cup, but we thought with COVID.
After the meeting.
Yeah, after the meeting.
Okay, I'm officially out of shape. We got to get back in the council chambers, our sprint back. All right, we've got another recognition this evening, and I'm going to turn this one over to Counselor Bruce Huff as we invite Malik Hardy and his, anybody with him, to the podium.
Malik Hardy, Spencer High School, the wrestling team, and any of the administration, please come forward. While they're coming forward, I want the council and the audience to really take a good look at Malik Hardy. If you saw Malik coming down the street, he would just appear to be a nice teenager walking, a smaller-sized teenager walking down the street, but once we read this proclamation, you see he has a little bit more than you see in his stature. Malik, welcome. As promised, the mayor has set everything up for you to be here this evening. The proclamation reads, "Whereas on February 13, 2021, Malik Hardy won the Georgia High School Association Class 4A State Wrestling Championship at 120 pounds in Macon, Georgia. Whereas Malik Hardy has dominated the sport of wrestling with a career record of 153 wins and 15 losses. He is a three-time Columbus, Georgia city champion and a four-time Area 2 4A champion. Whereas in addition to claiming the Class 4A State Wrestling Championship, Malik Hardy placed three times at the State Wrestling Championship, having won fourth place in 2018 and 19, and second place in 2020. Whereas in Malik Hardy's senior year of high school, he had an undefeated record of 36 wins and zero losses. Whereas at the 2021 Georgia High School State Association, Georgia High School Association State Wrestling Championship, Malik Hardy won the first round in a bye, and the second round win was determined by a fall over, by a fall over Christopher Lloyd of West Lawrence High School in 2 minutes and 38 seconds. And whereas in the quarterfinals, Malik Hardy won by major decision with a score of 13-5 against Tyson Thurman of Jefferson High School. In the semifinals, he won with another fall over, another fall over Gabe Turdy of Benedictine High School in 1 minute and 58 seconds. Whereas the showdown was saved in the final round, where Malik Hardy captured his title as Class 4A State Wrestling Champion in a technical fall against Thomas Terminy of Mary's High School in 4 minutes and 48 seconds. And whereas Malik Hardy has been named a 2021 All-American Wrestler by U.S. And whereas Malik Hardy has been named a 2021 All-American Wrestler by USA Wrestling, which is the national governing body for the sport of wrestling in the United States. And whereas the mayor, members of city council, city manager Isaiah Hughley recognized the Malik, recognized Malik Hardy for his accomplishments. Now therefore, BH Skip Henderson III, Mayor of Columbus, Georgia, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 25th, 2021 as Malik Hardy Day.
Malik, you wanna come up and say a few words? Introduce the folks with you?
I just wanna say thank you for having me and it was hard through a pandemic and what we had to go through, trying to just get practices in and trying to get the right amount of work to, between my school and my club, I had to find a way to succeed and I was just glad I had a chance to do something with such a big pandemic going on and I'm more glad that I could show what I can do to the fullest extent. Thank you again for having me.
Coach? Malik, we are all extremely proud of you. Uh, you, I hope you don't mind, we're gonna grab your coat tails and share in your success. And as, and as I mentioned to the, uh, to the gentleman from the River Dragons, this is a really heck of a year. I mean, people, I've actually heard somebody say it was an easier year in sports. There's never been a year this hard in sports. There's never been a year when you've had to stay so focused, not just on your training, your technique, but also on keeping yourself healthy, keeping people around you, making sure that they're healthy. So it's just, what an incredible, incredible feat. We're very, very, very proud of you. Coach, you wanna say something and, and maybe let everybody else introduce themselves?
Okay, um, a little bit. Well, this is, uh, this is wonderful, wonderful parents right here and, uh, also too, this is my assistant coach right here, TJ, um, TJ Olesby. Um, first of all, I just wanna thank, uh, you, the mayor and city council and also you, Mr. Huff, you know, you and I go back, you know, before we, uh, knew our names, you know, and, uh, I, I really, I really wanna just hearken back home when I saw you all at the, um, the, uh, Otis, Otis Spencer, um, groundbreaking ceremony. I just wanna, first of all, I wanna thank you all for that because, uh, you know, that, that's, that's something that was long overdue and, um, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna serve all the athletes in Columbus very well and I just wanna thank you all for that at first. Um, but as far as, uh, this, this gentleman right here is concerned, um, you know, he's very, if you can tell, he's very humble and, you know, he, he won't say how good he is, but, uh, you know, as his coach, you know, I, if I could brag on him, you know, he's, he's one of the bests that's ever been through here. And, uh, I've had, I've had, you know, this is my fifth, uh, state champion, but he's by far probably, you know, if not the best, but one of the best that's ever been through the state of Georgia. Um, the, the young man that he beat from Jefferson, um, Tyson Thurman was a two-time state champion and he, he beat him in the quarterfinals and we kinda knew that that was the showdown. And so you, you know, we had television cameras, I mean, I had people all, you know, it was just everywhere. And, um, when he, when he won that match, we knew that he was, he was gonna bring it home and, um, you know, he, he has an opportunity to go to, um, the Citadel, which is, everybody knows what kind of school that is. And, uh, so I'm very proud for him. So, you know, to get in the Citadel, you have to have good grades and that's, you know, so for somebody to have a three-point-four, three-point-five GPA, um, you know, that, that's what means more to me than any state championship, you know? Um, so for him, for him to have an opportunity to go there, um, and I teased him, I said, every, every match you win on a college level, I'll take credit for it, but if you lose, I don't know you, you know what I'm saying? So, uh, but, uh, I, I just wanna just take this time to, to, to thank, to thank him, thank his parents, um, thank everybody at, at, uh, Spencer, you know, Spencer High School, you know, I, I see, uh, city manager, you know, he, he knows the hard work that I, that I put in over there and, and I, I do this, this is a labor of love. I don't, I don't do this for any accolades, anything, just I do it because I love children. And so, um, he's gonna take the torch and move on to the next level and, um, I, I'd be remiss if I didn't, if I didn't mention my, my wife who's always by my side. She gives me the platform to, to work with these kids and she, she tells me that that's my calling and to do that and, and as long as I have breath in my body, I'm gonna always serve the children of Columbus, Georgia. Thanking God.
Coach, let me just say too, that, um, everything we said about the young man was, was heartfelt, but, but, uh, it's about half of the, uh, pressure that coaches feel, trying to keep these young men and women that are in your charge, not only moving forward and advancing, becoming better, uh, athletes, but also becoming better people and also keeping I forgot to give credit to Ma and Pa. They're the ones that did all the sweating and the driving and getting him to practice, them safe. So, what a tremendous job you did. right? If y'all would give him another round of applause and I'll come with him.
I just wanted, yeah, I wanted to do a shout-out to the parents because as a wrestling mom, I know exactly what they go through. They have to watch their child, um, cut weight. They, they have to sit there and deal with the exhilaration and, and also the extreme, um, exhilaration and, what's the other word I'm looking for?
Yeah, proud of him.
Just exhaustion of watching your child there on, the focus is completely on him and you just, you almost get tunnel vision because you're watching it and you're, it's so intense. And so, and you go, you just keep on going every, every week in watching that and it's quite a sacrifice for the parents and for him to get to this level and get to this point, I understand the sacrifice that you guys put into this and so I just wanted to give you guys a shout-out.
Thank you, Counselor Crabbe. Thank all of you for, for making Columbus look good. We appreciate everything y'all do. Good luck at the Citadel. Right now, uh, our former mayor, Bob Portishev, has passed on, but I guarantee you, he's raising a Citadel ring to the, to the sky, excited because you're going to the best university in the nation. Very good. It's, I tell you, it's good particularly during a year of so many trials and tribulations. It's really a lot of fun to be able to recognize people that didn't just persevere and get through the year, but excelled during it too. Uh, our own local, uh, ice hockey team and, and of course, young Malik who's, uh, off to, uh, the Citadel. Before I turn it over to the city attorney, I do wanna point out one thing. Uh, I wanna make sure everybody's aware of a, um, a, a hiring event that the city of Columbus is hosting on, uh, June 11th at 10:00 AM from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Columbus Civic Center. You know, a lot of, a lot of you have heard about some of the, um, unemployment benefits being, being scaled back around the middle of the month. There are jobs open. If you are interested in learning more about a possibility of going to work, uh, for the Columbus Consolidated Government, I want to invite you to the Civic Center, uh, on, on, uh, June 11th, uh, from 10:00 to 2:00. So hopefully you can, you can be out there. All right, um, Mr. City Attorney, what's your agenda?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We do have a fairly full agenda. Uh, at the mayor's request, I'm gonna call up item nine on our agenda. Is Pastor Stallion here with any of the Mount Pilgrim Church, Church group, if they would come to the podium? They're requesting a special exception to allow a church with more than two hundred and fifty seats, general commercial at 375 Far Road. It's recommended for approval. And this is a public hearing. We'll hear from Pastor Stallion and then we'll see if anybody else in the audience wants to be heard.
Mr. City Manager?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, uh, City Attorney. I just want to remind, um, the members, uh, of council that, um, Reverend Stallion and, uh, the Mount Pilgrim congregation have worked with, uh, city staff and the city of Columbus, um, to ensure that we get an interchange at, uh, 185 and Casita Road. Uh, it, without the cooperation of Reverend Stallion, um, and the Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church, uh, that interchange might not be, um, on the agenda to, to actually happen in Columbus, Georgia. And so I do want to thank them and with that, they are relocating, um, to a different site and that's why they have left that site and, uh, they're going to build a new church building on a new site and, uh, and that's why they're asking for this exception that they can proceed for with that project, making way for that interchange at I-185 and Casita Road. So thank you, Reverend Stallion, uh, to you and the Mount Pilgrim congregation for working with the city of Columbus, the citizens of Columbus, to make this happen.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Huff?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to echo the city manager and thank the pastor and the church for working with us, the city manager and his staff for digging in. As, as Reverend Stallion knows and his, uh, deacon for it, that we have had to dig in. We've been going at this since two thousand and fifteen. So, it's, it's just nice to have a good result to come from such hard work. So thank you so much and thank you again, like I said, to the city manager and his staff and everybody. We had several meetings to try to get this done, so look forward to, uh, opening day. Thank you.
Counselor Huff, you wanna make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
Wait, wait just a second.
It's heard reading.
Let's make sure nobody else wants to be heard and then, then we'll vote. Hang on there, Reverend. Uh, anybody else in the audience wanna be heard on the petition for special exception? Yeah, I don't see any hands, so go ahead and make your motion.
I'd like to move that we accept, uh, the motion of, uh, having an exception for this particular project, uh, for Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church to be built on the Far Road property.
Motion and a second. Motion by Counselor Huff, second by, uh, Counselor Thomas. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Tucker, said Thomas, I'm sorry, didn't say that. Uh, Counselor Tucker, uh, any, uh, further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That passes. Reverend Stallion, add my thanks to you and your church for being so community-minded in, uh, allowing the, the city of Columbus to try to, uh, advance and we appreciate the way in which you handle all the, all of the negotiations.
We just wanna say thank you as well and we're thankful for the partnership that we've developed, uh, as a church and with the city. Again, this is for the betterment of our community and so we're glad to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, sir, for being here. That item is approved. We'll go back to number one at the top of the agenda, Mayor. This is second reading of zoning change at 213 North Star Drive and it is ready for adoption.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second by Counselor Tucker. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? That is approved.
All right, item two is the dog park, uh, tech exchange in the UDO, ready for adoption.
Motion approved from Mayor Pro Tem, second from, uh, Counselor Crabbe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no? All right, that's approved.
Okay, item three, this is a first reading, public hearing on a zoning matter at 4322 Rosemont Drive going from single-family three to residential office. Recommended approval by Planning Department and Planning Advisory Commission. Uh, we're gonna call up Mr. Ed Adams and Mr. Carson Cummings.
All right, Counselor Garrett.
Introduce themselves first and then we'll hear from any opposition.
All right, Counselor Garrett?
Uh, I would like to make a motion to delay this because I have received significant opposition from constituents in the area. Uh, this is a residential neighborhood that surrounds the school and I've had, uh, a petition with forty-nine signatures on it and, uh, I just, I'd like the developers to meet with the neighbors and try and explain exactly what the development is, so I'd like to make a motion to delay this vote.
All right, there's a motion to delay by Counselor Garrett, seconded by Counselor Crabbe. All in favor for the delay, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll continue to hear from those that are here in attendance tonight who came here to speak, but, uh, it will be delayed.
We'll delay that first reading for two weeks then, Mayor. Let's see, uh, anybody wanna come on up? Just form a line at the council and give your name and address for the record, please, at the podium.
Hello? Okay, my name is Debbie Day. Okay, thank you. My name is Debbie Day and I live in the neighborhood of the zoning area that you're speaking of, uh, of the 4322 Rosemont Drive area. We came to try to explain why we're here today and we actually kinda found out by accident what they were building in that area. This is a quiet neighborhood where some of the people have been there for fifty years. I have been there for eight. It's quiet, I love it. When we found out it was gonna be apartments, we got a little bit upset because that meant when we talked to them, they were talking about seventy apartments. That means at least a hundred and forty more cars in our neighborhood, which we already have trouble with them stopping at a stop sign and speeding down the road. So now you're gonna have a hundred and forty more people speeding down our road, going up and down our streets and then they're gonna have their friends, they're gonna have their family, so that's gonna add to the traffic that's going through our neighborhoods as well. Um, we talked to them and they tried to say that they might build, uh, patio homes, which would be an investment because many of these people and myself, we don't want our property value to go down by having more problems in the neighborhood by having an apartment building. Um, and we tried to talk to them about, uh, if they, we thought that they were gonna have the entrance at, uh, 4322 Rosemont Drive and it turned out that their entrance was gonna be actually in our neighborhood. Um, and so we tried to discuss with them that the, the importance of the safety of our family, our friends, our animals, but we would also like them to put in some speed bumps and then they said, well, that's something you have to take over with the city. And I said, well, excuse me, the city's not building on that property, you are. So we feel like it's your responsibility to ensure the safety of our neighborhood by having these speed bumps installed on Acacia and Chevon Lane so that, uh, we don't have to worry about getting hit by these people. Um, we have no animosity towards the builders, as we must say, but we do feel like that them sending sick letters into the neighborhood wasn't exactly a thrill for us to find out. Uh, and then having to spread it amongst ourselves, what was being built in the neighborhood. They said that they had, uh, had done a traffic count as my friend and I walk in this neighborhood every single day, okay? We never saw anything that counted any traffic. And again, we're, we can do the math and when you say seventy apartments and you're saying seventy and seventy is a hundred and forty because that's two people living in the apartments together and then they're a family, we're talking about moving this up to about three hundred or four hundred more cars. And again, we just want to get the city to understand that we think that, that our safety should come and play here, you know? And, uh, I guess the fellows are trying to tell us now that they wanna talk about it and we appreciate that, but again, like we say, it is important to have speed bumps just to protect us, okay? at 4322 Rosemont Drive, and it turned out that their entrance was gonna be actually in our neighborhood. And so, we tried to discuss with them that the importance of the safety of our family, our friends, our animals, but we would also like them to put in some speed bumps. And then they said, "Well, that's something you have to take over with the city." And I said, "Well, excuse me, the city's not building on that property, you are." So, we feel like it's your responsibility to ensure the safety of our neighborhood by having these speed bumps installed on Acacia and Chevon Lane, so that we don't have to worry about getting hit by these people. We have no animosity towards the builders, as we must say, but we do feel like that them sending sick letters into the neighborhood wasn't exactly a thrill for us to find out. And then having to spread it amongst ourselves, what was being built in the neighborhood. They said that they had done a traffic count, as my friend and I walk in this neighborhood every single day, okay? We never saw anything that counted any traffic. And again, we can do the math, and when you say 70 apartments, and you're saying 70 and 70 is 140, because that's two people living in the apartments together, and then they're a family, we're talking about moving this up to about 300 or 400 more cars. And again, we just want to get the city to understand that we think that our safety should come in play here, you know? And I guess the fellows are trying to tell us now that they want to talk about it, and we appreciate that. But again, like we say, it is important to have speed bumps just to protect us, okay? And it would have been really nice to get letters, so that we might have came and talked to you guys sooner. Thank you. And these are other neighbors that live in the neighborhood, over 50 years in the neighborhood, and they might want to say how they felt about this as well.
Okay, if you would, give them your name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Bethany Galyan, and we are at 4230 Acacia.
Travis Galyan, 4230 Acacia.
We are actually right at the stop sign, and we are within a couple of feet where the, one of the entrances or exits may be. And it's just like she had stated. We purchased the home two years ago and have actually put a lot of money into the home. It's a very quiet neighborhood, other than the traffic already is massive. Sometimes people, you will hear them screech brakes for a minute straight, where they have missed the stop, they see the stop sign too late. And, you know, I mean, it's scary in itself, but when you think about them adding that amount of people, and me being just a couple feet away, to go ahead and, you know, tell you more of the situation, with us being within arm's reach of what they are wanting to fit there, I just want to give you kind of a heads-up of our situation. My husband Travis, he is a war veteran, four deployments. He is a disabled war veteran, and they're wanting to put the entrance right in front of our home at 4230 Acacia. I'm sorry if I go over some more things, I just started down some notes before coming. And we also have an autistic disabled son. And not only us, but our neighbor directly behind us has a granddaughter that is autistic, and she's outside a lot. There are so many times that if somebody was not watching or being out there when this traffic is coming through, because there's no speed bumps, these kids would be hit. I mean, I know just from them, they've had to keep an eye out on kids, because we can't keep the traffic under control as it is now. I mean, they already go way too fast. I mean, my husband, he has literally screamed at people, and from our yard, "Slow down, be respectful, there is children at play," you know? Littering, blaring music to the point that our windows are shaking, skidding, you know? And my, one other thing is too, where is the, you know, we have like no patrolling going on, so I can see that, you know, it could possibly, I don't want to see it get any worse. And I, you know, the way I, if you think about multiplying the count of people, it is going to get worse. But they're definitely, even at this point, before anything else is built, we definitely need attention already, but we are tenfold going to need it if anything is built in that area. And that's what I'm wanting to know. What is the city's plan, or this builder's plan, for the noise control and the traffic control? I know that through the Special Adaptive Housing Program for veterans, and also, they have programs that you can get involved for autism in the state of Georgia. If the veterans are rated 100% or permanent or total disabled, they can get involved if there are building lots that are available near your property. I could skip, and we would be where that property is. If you need any adaptive changes, house plans or features due to your disability, they can get involved. But as well, if a builder wants to come in and build, and it's close to you, and it interferes with disabled veterans, disabilities, you can contact them. Which my husband is rated 100% on PTSD and TBI, which I think both of those conditions do qualify. I know that architects and builders are hired to take on these cases. I'm just wanting to know, at this point, do we need to contact the Department of Veteran Affairs, or any type of Georgia advocacy programs for autism? Because up until two weeks ago, we had no idea that apartments were going to be built. We just got a letter saying that it had been approved, which was unfair for me to prepare. I am my husband and my son's biggest advocate, and I will fight this to the end. That's all I have to say, and do you have anything else to say? And I think that he just wants me to get away from microphone at this point. Thank you.
I live on Acacia Drive across from the property in question. I've lived there off and own since 1960. I'm retired now. I did not receive the first letter sent out by the Planning Commission, and I don't know if I would have actually have known anything about this, except that a gentleman rang my door to get my opinion of what was going on over there. Can I ask a few questions of this? First off, I'd like to see how many people here are against this changing from the neighborhood? Could you raise your hands? Or is there anybody here that's for it? Okay, I think we've reached a conclusion then, that the majority of people here do not want this. There's very much a lot of concern about the traffic that's going to be generated. And I'm wondering, how did the Planning Commission actually come about to approve this? And has it done any studies of the traffic in the area, and how much it would generate? I take it they haven't done anything like that then? I would like to know, does the school board still own that land? Do you know?
No.
They do? Well, there was some talk at one point that the school board had been deeded that land by a large landowner in the area, and one of the stipulations was that the single-family residential had to be kept in effect as long as they owned it, and I would suppose possibly in perpetuity. Now, if the school board does not own that land, is the deal that the company that has requested the rezoning, will they buy it from the school board then?
You'll have to address the applicant on that, sir. I do see on the staff report that it says Muskogee County School District is the owner. Mr. Jones, do you know anything about a contingency sale on this?
I can't understand you, I am here.
We'll have to call the applicant up after y'all get through and let him explain any clause in the deed. It does show the school district is the owner.
Has the actual Planning Commission, or the tax people, that used the magical computer program several years ago to regenerate the tax, the tax codes around for the houses there? Have they done that for this? Did they take into account what it would do to the housing values there?
Well, I can't speak for the Board of Tax Assessors right now, sir, but I assume that they've done a reappraisal of the whole area.
Well, there seems to me that there's a lot of questions about this that haven't been answered, and I think there should be more research done by the Planning Commission into some of these issues, to see whether or not, if they could come up with some more answers, and then maybe people wouldn't be so opposed to this development. It would also be interesting to know if the, I have heard rumors that the development at one point was going to be an apartment complex with over 100 units in it, which would generate at least 200 cars coming in and out of there. Now, I have also heard the rumor that the developers are willing to put in patio family homes instead, but there is no assurance that once this ordinance is passed by the council here, that they have any reason to stand by what they have told some people. So, I think that deserves to be looked into more closely. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Garrett?
In addition to the questions that my constituents raised, I also would like the developer to address the possible drainage issues. I know those may not fall squarely on the private property owner, but I just want to hear what the response is, as far as how they can contain that, because I know that's been circulated among council.
Okay. Yeah, we'll get, we'll get the developer up here to answer some of those questions, and of course, keep in mind, we've got another two weeks to do a little bit of this, to engage in some more discussion.
Mr. Adams, if you could address a couple of those points that Counselor Garrett's asked about, the drainage and the Muskogee County School District ownership, is there any kind of a reversionary clause or other clause in the deed that ties this to a certain use?
Oh, yeah, I can answer, or try to answer, most of those questions. First off, I'm Ed Adams, I'm with Caldwell Banker Commercial. Myself and Carson Cummings, we actually represent Muskogee County School District in the sale of this property, and are here on behalf of the developers. First question is, does the Muskogee County School District still own the property? Answer is yes. The sale of the property is contingent upon this rezoning happening. If this rezoning doesn't happen, the builders are probably not going to purchase the property. So, you asked, Counselor Garrett asked about rainwater issues, is that correct? Yeah, so, when the building, when the Rosemont Elementary School was built, it was built in the 1950s, under the 1950 Building Code. I can say that since 1950s to now, building codes have changed a whole lot, and essentially when you deal with rainwater, retention ponds, detention ponds, all that stuff, basically any water that falls on the property has to remain on the property and go through a retention or detention system. So, if the property is redeveloped, then all that rainwater runoff and everything like that will drastically improve. Right now, it's just a vacant piece of property, where any rain that falls on it sheds off and goes into the roadway. So, that will be drastically improved. And I can't remember any of the other questions. There was, I know there was some questions about the proposed use of the property. That's one of the reasons we asked for a delay, is just, we're still very, very early in the design stages of this thing, and we want, well, let me say this. Myself, as well as Carson Cummings, as well as the builders that are involved here, we're lifelong members and born and raised here in Columbus, Georgia. We are all residents of Midtown. Our kids play at Peach Little League. We graduated Columbus High School in Hardaway and Brookstone, so we're not in here to rile up the neighborhood, and certainly don't want to show any disrespect to our veterans as well as their kids or anything like that. That's not our purpose. And when we heard that there was some concern in the neighborhood, that's why we asked for the delay. Because we want to go into the neighborhood, we want to talk to all the neighbors, and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing in making sure that we're gonna be, hopefully, putting together a product that will be welcome to the neighborhood. So, any other questions?
Mayor, councilors, any other questions while they're here? We're gonna delay the first reading hearing.
It doesn't appear to be.
Okay, we're gonna bring this back in two weeks for another public hearing. That'll be a 9:00 AM meeting. I think so. Two weeks, is that right? Madam Clerk?
Sir, I know that we've discussed this at length, but I want to reiterate the amount of traffic that's going to be in our neighborhood, that we already live next to Rosemont Apartments, and what traffic's through there, and we are just afraid for our safety.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. City Attorney, the next regularly scheduled council meeting is June 8th, and that's gonna be at 5:30 PM.
So, that's a 5:30 meeting in two weeks. Mr. Adams, Mr. Cummings, neighbors, that'll be a 5:30 meeting in two weeks.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
All right. Next item, Mayor, is the hearing for zoning change at 641 Veterans Parkway, going from General Commercial to single-family four. It's recommended for approval by Planning Advisory Commission and the Planning Department. It's a historic Columbus petition. Is anybody here with an applicant? Is that Ms. Williams? Mossy's coming. There are two conditions in the proposed ordinance. The front setback is a minimum of nine feet, the rear setback is a minimum of 20 feet. If you would, give them your name and address, Ms. Williams.
Kathy Williams, 731 First Avenue. My husband and I are purchasing this lot from Historic Columbus Foundation. It's one of the major gateways into the Historic District Foundation, and we feel a better use for it as residential rather than construction. So, we have, in partnership with Historic Columbus Foundation, we'd like to get this rezoning. Can I answer any questions you might have?
Any questions? All right. Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this petition? I don't see any hands. Thank you, Ms. Williams. We'll vote on that in two weeks.
Ms. Williams, thank you, ma'am. I'll just thank you.
All right. Next item, Mayor, is the first reading of an ordinance regarding the use of masks or face coverings that would repeal the provisions requiring their usage on private property and leave the public property to the discretion of the mayor and/or council in the future. It's ready for any discussion, Mayor. Now, we're gonna let this go for two weeks for the second reading.
But we'll let you make the motion. Any, and we have, by the way, the number that had picked up a little bit dropped again to about 105, 107, something like that, so it's gonna stay right around 100 more for a while. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Mayor or Mr. City Attorney, since this is a first reading, it will not be finalized for two weeks. During that two weeks, what is the requirement of our citizens in masks?
The Mayor's Office has suspended the... The mayor's office has suspended the, uh, the enforcement of the ordinance. It'll remain so until council has an opportunity to vote on it.
And so that means at this point?
At this point, there's no requirement for masks anywhere, other than in government buildings.
Other than, other than city property.
We are still requiring for the time being, uh, that, uh, people that come into property owned by the Columbus Consolidated Government are still expected to wear a mask.
And if there are, um, businesses, restaurants, and that sort of thing that, um, wish to require a mask in their business, they may do that?
Yes, ma'am.
They certainly may.
Thank you.
All right. Vote on that one in two weeks at 5:30. The next item is the first reading on the alcohol amendment. This would, uh, be consistent with the new state law, which allows on-premises licensees to sell two mixed drinks per carryout food, uh, order. And it's simply to be consistent with the state law and recognize that new law. Any other questions on that one? Okay. We'll vote next time on it. Then the, item seven, we'll create a moratorium on shared electronic scooters, e-scooters on the right of way in Columbus through September 6, 2021. These are still a hot topic around the state and around the country, but we'll vote on that in two weeks. Any questions? All right. Then we've got a first reading. This is an ordinance amending Chapter 13 to put in a minimum $1,000 penalty for littering in Columbus, Georgia. And we've got a, uh, one Senate amendment, I think, that Mayor Pro Tim Allen wants to offer, and I can read that into the record. He just wants to add to Section A of the ordinance on the table, uh, this additional sentence in that subsection. In the discretion of the recorder, violators may also be subject to reimbursement to the City of Columbus for the reasonable cost of removing any litter thrown, deposited, dumped, placed, or left in violation of this article. If we can get a motion on that amendment, we'll tack it on.
All right. Motion from Counselor Crabbe, second from, uh, Counselor House to make that amendment. Any discussion as to the amendment? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Mr. Mayor Pro Tim?
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim, you want to comment a little bit?
Yes, I would. Thank you, Mr. City Attorney and Mayor. Uh, we all, uh, shared our, uh, time with the Clum, Keith Columbus beautiful effort and walking the streets and picking up litter, and I, I think this is an effort to continue that forward, uh, give the Recorder's Court a little extra strength and enforcement, and hopefully get attention of those that are, uh, doing some things that, that just do not make our city look as good as it could. So, uh, appreciate your support on this amendment and, uh, consideration of the ordinance as it comes forward. Thank you.
We certainly support it. The Mayor Pro Tim bringing it forward. Littering has become, it has reached epidemic proportions in our community, and, um, we've got to do something to get people's attention and get them to stop it. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to thank the Mayor Pro Tim, uh, for bringing forward this ordinance. Um, I, I think it's critical, uh, it's needed, and, uh, the timing is right, Mayor Pro Tim. So I, I just wanted to really take the microphone to say thank you, um, for the ordinance, and I hope that the members of council will support what you're trying to do. Uh, I was telling the mayor just earlier, and, and I just pulled up a photo. Can't see it, but it's a photo, I was at lunch and pulled up behind a truck and watched him throw his cigarette pack out the window, and I took his picture with his tag number. And, you know, I really want to encourage citizens to, uh, be vigilant, and you see someone littering, you know, take a fo- photo and, and report it. And if you do, like what I've done with this truck, uh, if the Mayor Pro Tim gets his ordinance passed, and you're willing to go to court and be the witness with photo and evidence, that's going to be a thousand dollar fine for that person, and I think if we do a few of these, we will get their attention. I mean, it is just ridiculous, and, and I was in, uh, Little Rock, Arkansas just last week, and, um, and throughout, on streets and throughout neighborhoods, they've got $1,000 fine for littering, and then they've got a telephone number you call to report in Little Rock, Arkansas. And if they can do it in Little Rock and other cities across this country, we can do it in Columbus, Georgia. And Mayor Pro Tim, that's why I'd like to thank you for this ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Thank the council for considering it.
All right. Uh, we will bring that back for a vote then in two weeks as amended, and, uh, if passed at that time, it will be effective 10, 10 days after the mayor's signature, so fair warning to, uh, litter bugs out there. The fine could go up substantially, uh, in a matter of a few weeks. And then, Mayor, the last thing we need to note is a request for executive session on real estate acquisition, um, and that's all we have at this time.
Okay. Any questions of the city attorney? All right. Mr. City Manager, it's your agenda. Hit your light. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I'm going to actually, on this first item on my agenda, Mayor, I've been talking to you about it, um, you, the council, and, uh, to the citizens, uh, for the last month and a half or so. But it's the 2022 Transportation Investment Act, Transportation Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax, Project List, uh, the River Valley Regional Commission, um, they're preparing to go out for another T-Slot. And we have been sharing a list of projects that we've asked council members to provide, staff to, uh, provide, uh, come up with that, um, you might consider, and we want to include all of these projects on a list that we are, uh, have been asked to submit to the River Valley, um, Commission, uh, the Roundtable, um, T.A. Roundtable for consideration for the 2022 election. And, um, you can add a list, the members of council can add a project tonight if they want to, and, and at least what we're asking you, we're not asking to edit the list or do anything, we're asking you just to approve this as a list that we send to this T.A. Roundtable, River, River Valley T.A. Roundtable for consideration. And so, uh, Deputy City Manager Hodge, if, you've got a list of those projects, I'd like to just, uh, Rick Jones, you've got a list of those projects? I'd like to just, as a reminder of those projects on this list, um, to, um, to remind you of the list of projects that we want to send in the entire list.
Excuse me, Mr. City Manager. Counselor Thomas has a question.
Um, Mr. City Manager, would you then go into, so what happens next?
Sure.
Once we send this list to the, um, Roundtable?
Yes.
Then what?
Um, we will do that. Just one second.
Okay, okay. Good evening. Uh, we want to remind you about our last conversation we had, uh, back on May 11th about all this, and Counselor Thomas, I'll try to get to your question as well, in terms of what's, what's the next step. We, but again, we will remind you, you know, we're in this region here with, with 15 other counties, excuse me, and what's, what's come about, if it did in 2010 and 2011, was we came together with, with projects and so forth to go forward as a region, not just dealing with Columbus, Muskogee County, but the other 15 counties as well. This is the amount of money, again, that has been projected as of January this year, what you, what we can, could expect as a region again, not, not just dealing with Columbus, but as a region. The 641 million, 620,00246 number, and then that, the, the bottom number down there is that 385, 524, 189, which is actually the, the amount that could be spent on actual projects itself. So, while there seems to be an awful lot of money here, in the grand scheme of things, it really isn't. And we, we told you last time also, again, they are, have broken these projects out to different categories. So if you're doing a roadway capital improvement project, you can, we, they're going to look at somewhere between 50% to 70% of that money going toward projects of that type. Safety, we get 15 to 30, and so on and so on here, uh, just to give an idea about what you can expect and the money to be spent on more than anything else. Uh, then there's the, we told you also that we have over 50 projects, and we list them out for you tonight in the resolution that's suggested for you, uh, that says, says all this from that standpoint. There are three areas that really are pretty much somewhat guaranteed, they're going to get funding of some sort, and that's transit capital, transit operations and maintenance, and aviation, because as I said to you last time, there's not a lot of competition for those kind of funds in the region. Uh, there is some things about some transit and so forth, a little bit of aviation, but not to the, not to the scheme that, uh, we're projecting for Columbus itself. You can see what the metrics request here is about 26 million, and the airport has asked for about 32 million, uh, total from that. And then what we did, we, as I told you last time, was we took all the projects we had, and we went back and actually scored them as we would score for any other project we had going on through our process itself. And these are the things we look at, and we have a, have a point system on it from that in terms of which one gets what, from congestion relief to adherence to state and local plans, bike and pedestrian accommodations, those things, all those, all those projects, each one of them got, got a score based on, on that particular item. And then these are the categories itself that, that were broken out into and how they, how they actually basically ranked when all, when all the scoring was done. With, in this particular case, for roadway capital, uh, the improvements to Williams Road Widening scored the highest here, with Buena Vista Road Corridor, the three-lane of that segment, of the, of really from Iljuson out to Wenton, which came in second. And then you see that the top 10 gets rounded out by Morris Road Improvements, which is, again, dealing with some three-lane segments and curb and gutter, um, trails and things of that, of that nature that could go on from that standpoint for that one. We did the same thing about what we thought were safety projects and how they would rank out from that standpoint, with the Second Avenue Streetscape being ranked the, the top one in, in this category, with other things like, uh, South Pumpkin Road Improvements, University Avenue Diet itself, uh, the Steammill Road Improvements we've talked about some time now, and the same thing with Double Church's Road Improvements. All these are safety projects, we thought, and how they, how they should shake out with the scoring system itself. For traffic, traffic operations, it's really improvements more or less to intersections and things of that nature, like on Schaumburg Road, JR Allen Parkway, that would be improvements to the actual off-ramps, as they come into, tie into Schaumburg itself and go, go up back into the Parkway itself. Uh, the same thing with JR Allen and Blackman Road and Schaumburg and Blackman Road, those were all improvements to the rampways. It, it came about really, uh, when we started talking about that, the study we had done last year for the whole entire length of JR Allen Parkway itself. Uh, and then you also see on here like 13th Avenue and 17th and Linwood, which is a proposed roundabout that could go in that area, uh, to make that, that, that intersection function a little bit better, a little bit safer at the same time. And then Martin Luther King, uh, Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard and Shepherd Enforcements and Chautauqua, which was proposed or requested for a, a roundabout at that point as well. So you get, get a feel here again for how it scored and what the actual project costs were. And I, and I want to make sure I clarify, if I didn't say this last time we met, I'll make sure I say it again today. We didn't score these on, based on the, on the amount of money. The money, the money was a factor, yes, but we didn't, we didn't say, well, this project costs more than this one, it all go first, or it shouldn't go at all. We didn't look at it from that standpoint. We looked at it based on that scoring system, uh, from, from the holistic approach more than anything else from that. For non-motorized, which is basically bike lanes and trails and pedestrian walkways and things of that, you can see like what we talked about here, um, and as I shared with you last time, that number at the top here, which I'm having a little hard time seeing with that reflection, uh, you can see what we're actually looking at in terms of what could be projected as far as total amount of money set aside for each one of these categories. And this one is, is a little over, little over 19 million. I say that because the number one ranking on here, of course, were sidewalks on various roads throughout the community. You could, you could eat all that money up for the entire region just for, for sidewalks. And we're not saying that's, that's, that's the way it should be or shouldn't be, but just to give you an idea about what, what we're going for in terms of looking at the rankings. Then there are things, of course, like here, like the Bull Creek Connector, the Cooper Creek Connector and the Cossack, that's associated with some of those, uh, the Bradley Park Drive Complete Streets Project, the, uh, Columbus River Walk Repaving sometime along the line, where we may have to look at doing just that. But all these projects were considered, and they were also looked at in terms of scoring, uh, what it would take to do that. This is a timetable we have shared with you from, from that standpoint as well. Uh, we are right now, we are right now in terms of getting ready to submit projects here by May 31st. We have to give them off to the Regional Commission at that time. They will take that and put that information all together and make it into a compact report that they will provide the entire Roundtable membership. And sometime between now and, looking at that, between now and October, that Roundtable will come together and start basically looking at projects. There'll be some discussion with the, with the, the local governments about which project do you want to go forward, which one do you not, things of that nature, how much money do we have, how much money do we not have? Those kind of things will be discussed over here over the next several months. And then, of course, uh, right now, we're looking at, we've been told, looking at sometime in March of next year, uh, they'd like to have, have an election for the, the, our citizens to actually vote on, on this measure, to determine whether they want to actually add another, another one cent sales tax, uh, on, not only on Columbus, but the, in the region as a whole. And I think we, we've said this, I want to make sure everybody understands this, and those particularly who are watching at home on this, this is an all or nothing election. Uh, if Muskogee County decides that, uh, they don't want it, but their other 15 counties do, the other 15 counties get their wish. The entire region gets, goes with, goes forward with this one cent sales tax. Uh, you may recall in 2010, Harris County voted against the, the existing T-Slot itself, but yet now Harris County, of course, is involved with the whole process, and I don't want to speak for Harris County or the commissioners or any of the citizens out there, but I think they, they understand now what the benefits are for this, in this program, for some of the improvements that are going on in that area. Uh, it's, it's a simple 51% vote here. You cannot, like I said, you can't opt out of this thing. If we approve it, uh, goes into effect, I still have July 1st in here, it really is, is January of 20, of 23, because the existing sales tax that we now have, the T-Slot tax, really doesn't end until December 31st of 22, uh, involved with all that. Uh, if we approve, if the voters approve the tax, our actual match goes down, when, what we call this local maintenance and improvement grant we get, get from GDOT every year, which is basically about 2 million, roughly $2 million of plus involved with that. We'd have to provide only a 10% match with that. If we reject it, uh, we have to go up to 30% on that. Uh, if the Roundtable, this is the interesting part to me, if the Roundtable meets and cannot come to a conclusion about how they want to go, if they want to go forward or backwards or whatever, basically they don't come out with a, a report or a reflection of what the election should be, um, the, the actual match goes into 50%. So there is something of a carrot stick approach here in terms of all that.
Excuse me, Rick. Counselor Thomas?
So, um, Mr. Jones, um, as I understand the calendar, um, the next step would be the end of May, when the city, um, presents this to the Roundtable. And then the Roundtable will take from the end of May of this year until October to look at these, to decide which ones are, um, should be on the ballot, which ones are not, that sort of thing. And in October, there's a question mark at the end of the Senate. In October, is the list finalized that goes on the ballot?
Yes, ma'am. That's my understanding right now, the, for the schedule, that, that is their target date. I'll, I'll-
So in, in October, we'll know which projects we're voting on that are in Muskogee County.
Correct.
And then that vote will be in March.
It's March, it's, it's tentatively scarred.
2022.
Okay. And then, uh, once that election is held, it will, the current 1% tax will stay on the books until the end of December, and if this tax is approved- And if this tax is approved, the new one will start January one.
Yes, ma'am.
If it's not approved, it will, that tax will disappear January one of twenty?
Three.
Three. Okay. I just want to make sure that we know what the cycle is.
Yes.
In this election.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
And so...
One more question, Councilor Huff?
Yes, sir. Thank you. On the LMIG part, you said if it does not pass, it's a thirty percent penalty if they agree at the roundtable? If they don't, it's a fifty percent match?
It goes to...
I shouldn't say penalty, but thirty percent match versus the...
Versus ten percent now.
Okay. So it passes, it's a ten percent match?
Right.
Okay. If not, thirty percent, if they don't agree, it could go as high as fifty?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And so, Mr. Mayor and Council, what we're asking you to vote on tonight is the list of projects that we've shared with you over the last few weeks, the last month or so, to go to the River Valley T-Round Table for consideration for this 2022 election. The election is March of 2022. And so, we're at, we want to submit the entire list that we've presented to you, and that's what we're asking you to approve tonight. That list has to be in by May thirty-first, and so we're asking for your approval.
Our motion to approve, Council Garrett, second from Council Tucker. Any... Sir? Push your button, Council Barnes. Let me see, maybe there's something not working. Okay, well, the motion is yours then, but I'm just saying you didn't show, push your button just so I can see it. I couldn't tell what you were saying. I thought you said you wanted to speak and then changed your mind. I just want to make sure it worked. It's not. We may need to get Jeremy to check and see if that connection's working. There it is. Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Initially, when the city manager started, I said move approval. That's when I looked at you and you shook your head like that.
I thought you said you wanted to be, you wanted to speak and then you never turned your light on.
Uh-uh.
Now, I can't hear you from over here without your, that's my fault, I don't hear all that well anyway. But we have a motion and a second to approve the list. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say no. It's approved.
So, Mr. Mayor, next, I have donations for Britt David Pottery Studio for Porch and Wreck.
Motion from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Council Crabbe. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no.
And next, I've got Civic Center donations for an event for Father's Day.
I missed the first. Who made the motion? Motion approved from Council Garrett, second from Council Tucker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. That's approved.
I've got some purchases. First, I've got contract extension for pursuit vehicles build out, vehicle build out.
There's a motion to approve, did we skip the Civic Center donations or...
No, we did that. I thought you voted on it. Yes.
That we did approve, okay. All right, so the purchases have been, there's a motion from Council, Council Garrett, A through H, and there's a second from Council Huff. Any discussion? Anyone want one pulled? Council House?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to hear a discussion about E and S. I approve it for it, just, I've had a lot of questions about it, so I'd like for somebody to explain it.
All right, we can pull E for further discussion. So, there's a motion to approve A, B, C, D, F, and G and H, and there is a second. Any other items they'd like pulled? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. All right, all items except E have been approved, and Mr. City Manager, if you go through all of them, but we may want to spend a little bit extra time talking about the supplemental yard waste.
Yes, sir. And Deputy City Manager Goodwin and Public Works Director will talk about E, but the first is a contract extension for pursuit vehicle build out for, obviously, our public safety people. We've got a Ford two-fifty, Ford recycling center vehicle. We've got a Ford three-fifty for stormwater management, health and wellness center for city employees, pre-sixty-five retirees and dependents, that's for care ATC. I've got supplemental, of course, yard waste that we'll talk about in a second. Got mail opener extractor for board of elections. Got tennis court supplies, and then repair of landfill compactor. Those are the purchases, and so we will talk about item E, supplemental yard waste collection. Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin.
Council Thomas has a question.
Council Thomas, did you have something?
Mr. City Manager, this list of purchases, when we were doing the budget meeting two weeks ago?
Yes.
We discovered that you and your staff, that there were some of the items that had been on the add delete list for twenty, for FY twenty-two?
Yes.
And that you decided that some of those, you had sufficient funding in the, left in the FY twenty-one budget to pay for?
Yes.
Would, and that you would bring those back as purchases?
Yes.
Could you or maybe Ms. Alexander or somebody tell us which ones those are on this list?
Well, they're not...
Are any of them on this list?
They're not on this list. They're still packaging that, and they will likely be on the next agenda, but they're not on this list.
Okay. So you will bring it back to our next session?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much.
Deputy City Manager Goodwin.
Okay, just to provide some details regarding the contract for the yard waste, we, of course, came to you and told you that the cost is going to be a hundred and forty-eight thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars per month, or one point seven million dollars annually. That will then get us five trucks and a three-man crew per truck. They will operate four days per week, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, ten days, ten hours per day, just like our current services are. So they're going to use the same days per week, same hours, so that they're consistent. The contract will begin on June the twenty-first for a one-year period with an option to renew for four additional twelve-month periods or four years. This is a temporary solution to augment our current services. We have, of course, fourteen routes that we operate. They will only operate five of those assigned routes. So there will be, you will have the contractor and city operations out there at the same time. So you'll see both units providing this service. Again, the contractor will only have five of the routes for this one-year period. All yard waste will be collected with the following exceptions. Tree for fee collections will continue as a tree for fee. So, just for information, this is what we consider a specialized service, and the city does not just, we don't typically, as part of our solid waste plan, our solid waste service, pick up trees. Again, this is a tree for fee, and if you want us to pick up the tree for fee, it's fifty dollars per load or plus tipping fees per ton. And so, that's the cost of the tree for fee. Contaminated waste, if you have inert material, brush, limbs, that kind of thing that's out there to be picked up, if trash is commingled with it or C and D or construction and demolition materials, we will not pick it up. We cannot put contaminated materials into our landfill. So that's, you know, if we see that out there, please know, remove the trash, remove the contamination, then we will come and we'll pick that up. Also, the city will collect the bulk waste, the couches and the refrigerators and those kinds of things. And so this particular service will not, this contracted service, will not pick that up. City resources will continue to pick up the bulky waste. And again, I know the question has been raised that there is no recommendation to increase our garbage fee as our direct result of this emergency service, and that's what we consider this to be, in order for us to get out and take care and pick up all that is out there. So again, it's for one year, five trucks, three-man crew, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Questions?
Council Huff?
Yes, Deputy City Manager Goodwin. On the routes, will those five trucks have set routes or will they alternate with our trucks as far as...
I believe they're going to have a set route, but Michael Criddle is here. I'll ask him to answer that specific question. If Mike, if you can come forward.
I was just wondering if we would benefit from any of the new trucks rolling around?
Yes, sir. Those are set routes.
Okay.
We do that just to keep track of who's picking up what and when.
Okay.
I don't want them swapping around. I want to know who's doing it. That way I know who to call.
Okay, I got you. I'll make sure. On the trees and limbs, are we still having those cut into four-feet sizes for pickup?
Yes, sir. All the requirements are exactly the same as before. Nothing has changed as far as that goes.
Yeah, I passed some this morning. I think that's why they're still there, because they just laid it out on the side of the curb.
And then that becomes bulk waste. We've got to send a grab ball out to collect those. That's correct.
Okay, okay. And I guess last question, this will reduce our phone calls?
Significantly.
Okay. Thank you.
I hope it reduces all of our phone calls a lot. It's going to take a few weeks for everybody to get caught up. I figure, once they go in on June twenty-first, about four weeks after that, we should be caught up on yard waste, and probably four weeks beyond that, we'll catch up on bulk. We're going to divert the resources over that we're currently using now for yard waste to put those on bulk once the five trucks come on board.
Okay. Thank you.
It's a good plan. Thank you.
And we're hopeful, we're hopeful too, after talking with the warden, that within another week to ten days, we'll start seeing some additional labor coming in from the state. Council Thomas?
Mr. Criddle, the five trucks with the three-man crews, are those trucks city-owned vehicles?
No, ma'am. They're owned by the contractor.
And are the three-man crews city employees?
No, ma'am.
So, that, all of that is done by the contractor?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Council Crabbe?
Thank you. What is the procedure for bulk waste? Are they supposed to, if somebody puts out a couch or a refrigerator or something like that, are they supposed to call three-one-one and give the address so that somebody can come and pick it up? Or do they just notice it on the regular routes and call it in?
It should be on a regular route, and that's one of the problems we're having now as we divert resources away from yard, from bulk waste first to yard waste, and then from yard waste to household garbage to pick that up first. When we divert those resources away, we're two or three weeks behind on our bulk waste right now, and that's the problem. So if they've got an unusual something out there that's probably good to call three-one-one now, but normally, under normal conditions, after we get caught up, it'll be something they just collect on a normal weekly route.
So we should, for now, encourage the citizens that call us to call three-one-one if they do have, you know, bulk waste of some...
Yes, ma'am. And identify what kind of bulk waste it is too is important. Like Lisa said, and it's important to understand what we're trying to do with the landfill. We're trying to maximize the life of the landfill by taking all the green waste and grinding it and composting that. We either sell it for mulch, and we get a little bit of money for it, not much, it's pennies a pound, but we do get something for it, and the rest of it goes to mulch, you know, for compost, and it doesn't go in to, you know, fill up our airspace and landfill. So it's really important that citizens understand it's for everybody's benefit to separate it out like Lisa said.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think that's all the questions.
Okay. And so, Mr. Mayor, we did talk about it last week, and I know that even my executive assistant came into my office today, and she's getting, if, we're getting calls in my office now, and that's really unusual. And so I know that you're being inundated with calls, and so, you know, with our current situation, with just no inmates and older equipment, I believe this is the right way to go, and I appreciate the mayor bringing this idea, the thought forward, and Director Mike Criddle and Deputy City Manager Goodwin for pushing it and getting something before us that you can consider, and I think this is going to get us where we need to be. I do think so.
I appreciate it. I think, you know, we're very sensitive to the fact that, I know y'all's phones are ringing off the hook, and I'm very sensitive to the fact that our citizens are confused and wondering when this is going to be picked up. And it just seems like, you know, the faster we pedal, the more behinder we get. And I think the two combined, if we can get these additional resources on the street, and if we can also begin to see a flow of inmate labor coming back into Columbus so that we can put them on trucks and deploy more vehicles out there, Mike has mentioned in the past that it'll certainly help them clean up and get caught up very quickly. All right. Motion to approve by Council Garrett, second from Council Huff. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass.
And so, thank you, Mayor and Council, for that. I've got three brief updates. The first one is, will be demolition update by Inspections and Co's Director, Ryan Pruitt and Rob Scott, Community Reinvestment Director. And then we will have a Health and Human Services Shuttle Service Update, and it's only two, about two slides. And then we'll, that'll be followed by the monthly finance update with our Finance Director, Mr. Ryan Pruitt and Rob Scott.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A few weeks ago, when we were talking about demolitions and what the city is doing, you know, foreblighted properties, a discussion was had about what options the city had to get these properties back to good use, to redevelop them and get them back to the tax rolls. So Director Scott and I, along with Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge, have been working together and just have a real quick presentation about what some of those options may be. So I'm going to kind of hit the first few slides, and then Director Scott will take us home. So real quick, the demolition process, we've been over it several times. We send out notices, have a hearing, give the owners a little more time to do it, and then bring it to council for first and second readings. Really want to focus on that last box. After the demolition is completed, my department confirms that the work is done to our satisfaction. Then we actually take the paperwork and the invoice from the contractor and turn that over to the Finance Department. They are the ones that actually send the bill to the owner. If the bill is not paid like it's supposed to be, then they are the ones that actually file the lien. So that is how that process works. It actually goes from my department to the Finance Department, and they are the ones that actually file the lien on the property. Currently, there are three hundred and twenty-eight properties that have active demolition liens on them. They total over two point one million dollars worth of liens. Just some statistics for them, two hundred and seventeen of those properties, of those liens are over ten years old, so they've been around for a long time. There's some on the list that date back to the early nineties and even to the eighties. Yes, ma'am. There are two hundred and forty-four of the properties that also have delinquent taxes, so once we demolish the property, the owners at that time stop paying the taxes. And here is just a kind of a heat spot map of where these demolition liens are located, so every red square represents one of those three hundred and twenty-eight properties. So you can kind of see the North Highland area is a cluster, as well as the Casita Road Corridor there on the southern edge of the county is also a cluster. So that's just a visual representation of where the three hundred and twenty-eight liens are. So I'm going to turn it over to Director Scott now, and he's going to go through some of the options we have regarding these properties.
Thank you, Ryan. I'm going to talk to you tonight about some of the options that we have... I'm going to talk to you tonight about some of the options that we have for these blighted properties. The very first option that we have is continue to do exactly what it is that we have been doing, place a demolition lien on a property and take no further action. The second option are for properties with demolition liens and no tax liens. The city can foreclose on these demolition liens and sell property in the same manner as the Tax Commissioner. For properties that have both demolition and tax liens, they go through nonjudicial sale processes, and they're sold at the courthouse steps. Properties that have both demolition and tax liens can also go through judicial sale process, requires legal fees to be paid upfront. And the fifth and final option that we have available to us, of course, is eminent domain. And the regulation allows for condemnation of economic, for economic development, and it requires the property owner to be compensated for the property at current appraisal cost. So this one, this option number five can prove to be costly implementation if we decide to go that route. So I want to talk to you now about some, what are the next steps? We've laid out the options, we're exploring the options, and find out which options will work best for us. I can tell you, early in the process, it looks like it might be a mix of some of the options, and there's no one silver bullet that will allow us the opportunity to just follow one process. So depending upon the property will dictate which option or recourse we might have available to us. Currently, we're working on some of the capacity building. We're working to identify for-profit and nonprofit developers and which could repurpose these properties and put them back on a tax roll. During the same time, during, in the capacity building process, we are exploring and solidifying the internal processes and systems, and that's more of the logistical process of what needs to happen when and who needs to be the entity responsible for that action. Another thing that we're currently working on is the strategic development. We're working to develop an effective end-use strategy. By end-use strategy, what are we going to do with the properties once we get them back? Or, you know, are we going to make housing? Is it, are we going to, you know, open it up for business? We have to think about those things as we continue to develop the process. And then are there any other activities that we can leverage? Right now is a, is a good time, you know, in the process of working with Ryan Pruitt and Director, Deputy City Manager Hodge. We've come up with some great things, and we're just going to use the time that we have available to us to really nail down and come up with something good that can do some really, really good for the citizens who live in the communities where these properties are. That's it.
Director Scott, I got a question. On the, on the nonjudicial sale process, what happens if nobody purchases the lot? Have we effectively foreclosed, and do we now own it?
Yes, we can, Mr. Mayor. Some of the, that option is definitely something that we can explore. One of the things that I stated earlier is that, you know, it's totally dependent upon what happens. So if, if that is something that we can't get dispossessed that way, then we're going to try to find creative avenues and other ways to be able to get the property and dispossess of it that way.
Well, and I'm, and I'm referring to the properties, I guess, after they've been demolished. I mean, it just seems if nothing's there, you know, because I've run into a number of people who've been interested in purchasing a lot that's adjacent to theirs, and the amount of the lien on it precludes them from buying. I mean, it's in an area where the lot's not worth $800, and the lien on it's $15,000. And, and so if there's some way for us to, you know, go through some type of foreclosure process that would not cost us a lot of money just to get it back on the tax rolls, even if they just keep it as a vacant lot, at least the meter starts running, they start. And we've got somebody who would be responsible for keeping it clean and not, not detracting from the neighborhood.
Well, and I will say, Mayor, you know, we've had, I think, two years in a row, we had an amnesty period where if they came forward during that window, that period, that we would waive the interest. And they just, and basically, it was a good deal, and just a handful took advantage of it. But, but I, I, I think as we come forward with options, I think one thing, we could have the flexibility of counsel could decide, or administratively allow us to decide whether we waive interest on some of these liens. For example, I know that staff mentioned to me, there are a number of churches that would want the property next door to them, but they would only want it if they could get it without the interest on it, you know?
Right.
And so, there may be opportunities as they, as we come back, come forward, come back to you with options.
Yeah, and I think part of that ought to be on the front end, when we were first doing our due diligence, Ryan. So as you guys are determining and going through the, the required process, if there is some owner who, or somebody wants to buy it, is there some circumstances where we would allow them to do that? For example, they'd have to get a solid estimate of bringing it up to repair it that you're comfortable with, and then pay that money, I don't know, I'm thinking out loud, but pay that money into you or into your department so that the money is embargoed, and then if somebody, that way if they fail to do what they said they'd do, you know, we'd have other options. I just, because the objective here, especially as we get aggressive and taking down so many of these properties, the objective is to get the property cleaned up, cleaned up for the neighborhood as quickly as possible. And there have been, very few, but there have been occasions when an owner or a new purchaser is sincere and wanting to get it, and they'll bring it up to a, a good quality standard quicker than we can get to it to demolish it. But, you know, it just encompass all of that, just a holistic plan on how to, how to deal with a blight and keep from creating more blight opportunities by taking the house down, let the yard grow up.
Yeah, and, and I think this is just the start of this conversation, and we are going to come back and say, we gave you five options, and these are the two or three that we want to move forward, and we may add something to it, and, and then we get you to approve moving forward with those options. And I think that's when we start to kind of bring some things to closure.
Well, council's taken a pretty bold step in approving a lot of money over the last few years to try to get rid of the properties that we cannot get people to fix back up. So to do that, for them to do that, we need, we need that plan and something that, you know, gives us options throughout the process.
I agree.
That's good. Mr. City Attorney, do you have a question or have a comment?
I have another comment, Mayor. Like I brought up in the past, I wanted to mention the Land Bank Authority, as I didn't see it in the slide, but if the city forecloses on a demolition lien property and there's no tax lien, or the city and the Tax Commissioner jointly go foreclose on a property, then it can be transferred to the Land Bank Authority, and they can extinguish all taxes, property taxes and demolition liens, and then their duties under the state law are to try to sell it to a low-income housing provider. But that's still one of the best tools in your toolbox. I just wanted to mention it again.
Very good. Mr. Scott?
Did you have any comments?
Yes, absolutely. I'm, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, for bringing up that option. During our discussion, you know, we talked about the options, we, and I talked about the strategy development. The Land Bank is definitely a tool that we seek to leverage in our redevelopment efforts for these properties and repurposing them for the communities. I just didn't want to bring that to the body because we haven't fully vetted how that's going to work and the logistics behind how we want to make it work. But I definitely want to tell you that it's something that is within the strategic development aspect of where we are right now.
So again, Mayor, this is just the start of this conversation, and we're going to be coming back.
And it may be good fodder for a work session, because there's going to be lots of input and questions, I think, from council who have an interest in this.
Counselor Tucker?
Yes, I actually was going to say something about the Land Bank as well, and I can't remember the organization that I sent to you, Director Scott, that came to Columbus, I think, in 2018, 2019, to, to basically do some training on Land Bank and how we can truly leverage our Land Bank when the other individuals were here. However, I have two questions. One is, is it possible for us to get an updated list with the 328 properties that have demolition liens? And also, based on the five options that you have presented, which would be your top choice?
Well, we're going to come back to you with those options.
I'm sorry. Only reason why I ask, because for me, I, I don't want to focus on, you know, the five.
Yes.
So I just wanted to see where you all are leaning toward out of this five, and I know it's not option one.
Yeah, I, yeah, well, I think, that's a good point, because if you have too many in there, it gets kind of cluttered. And so what I think we could do is ask Director Scott to make a decision on, on bringing back just two or three of the very best options to present to council, and then let them look at it.
Yeah. So if you don't mind, Madam Counselor, let us come back and, and, and do that.
Counselor Crabbe?
Thank you. I would just like to ask the city attorney to clarify the difference between the nonjudicial and the judicial sale process.
Well, that's a good question, Counselor, but the judicial sales, normally, a petition is filed in Superior Court, and you have to go through a notice and hearing process before it can be foreclosed upon and the property deeded out to a foreclosing party. And the other procedure, I'm not that familiar with, but, you know, it's probably an interim-type proceeding. We would just have to check more on that. But the, the main point is that whichever procedure you use, if the city and the Tax Commissioner jointly want to foreclose on something like this, they can do it jointly. And then once the proceeding is over, if the city has the property in its name, it can transfer it to the Land Bank Authority and get rid of any of these liens and taxes. That authority can extinguish the liens and taxes.
Well, is, is it possible if the Land Bank has it? I think that, doesn't the Land Bank focus on giving it to nonprofit organizations? No? Okay.
They do, or low-income housing developers. That's their charge under the state law.
I, I would like to give citizens the opportunity, you know, have a little bit higher ranking that if there's a property next door to them that they, that they would like to purchase or come into their, their possession, that they would be given the first right of refusal on, on that type of thing.
That is definitely an option we can consider. You know, like the city manager stated earlier, you know, we've still got a lot of things that we're working on, but that is definitely a great idea, Counselor, and it's something that we will put into our toolbox to consider as we work to develop a full comprehensive plan.
Yeah. Because, you know, we kind of just wanted you to know how many properties we're dealing with, the value of, and dollars and all of that, but wanted you to know there are options, and we are working to narrow those options down, and we're going to come back and lay it out, and then we're going to have a strategy to, to get some results.
Doesn't appear to be any more questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll hear from Deputy City Manager Lisa Goodwin, Health and Human Services Shuttle Service Update.
Just to provide you with a very brief update on where we are with the Health and Human Services Shuttle, that was provided to the 5601 Veterans Parkway location. It started on July 1st of 2020, operating between 7:30 a.m. and 5:10 p.m. each day. It was a demand-response type service where you would have to call in advance to reserve, and you could call two to 24 hours in advance for same-day service, beginning at 5:30 a.m. Monday through Friday. And the trips originated from the Metro Transfer, Transfer Center, and the pickup locations was the 2100 Comer Avenue site, as well as the 5601 Veterans Parkway site. So we would take, get you from Metro, take you to those locations, and then, of course, come back to the Transfer Center. For that service, there were 260 days of service that was provided, and 63 trips were scheduled. Of the 63 trips, 13 were no-shows. So we actually only transported 50 people within that 260-day timeframe as of May the 18th. It was very low ridership. Customers rode routes nine and 10 to get to their locations. We dedicated a full-time staff person each day to that service. They had to be there because, again, people could reserve two hours in advance, so we had to have a body there ready to go. And as a result of the concerns here that we have in terms of the low ridership and the fact that the customers are riding the regular route service, routes nine and 10, we are recommending that we discontinue this specialized service as of July the 1st.
And so, Mayor and Counsel, you know, we kind of projected that there would be very little ridership when we started this process, but we wanted to do it anyway, just to make sure that, you know, if people needed a ride, we'll provide it to you. But, I mean, you see the numbers, and it is just not fiscally responsible to continue to do this. And so what we want to do is just administratively make a 30-day or so notice to the public that we're going to discontinue in 30 days, and then we're just not going to do it. We have routes that service that, from the Transfer, routes nine and 10, and they go right there in front of the building. And so with a bus pass, they can just use a bus pass, there's unlimited rides with a bus pass, and, you know, it's just not fiscally responsible. My conscience won't let me continue to do it. So I wanted to alert you, and not asking for a vote, but administratively, we, we're going to discontinue after a 30-day notice to the citizens.
Counselor Thomas?
Mr. City Manager, I, I would suggest, if you can, that someone, either from Metro or Ms. Goodwin or someone, ride that bus route in, in June and July to make sure that our citizens who do use that know what the next step is.
Absolutely.
Just, sometimes when, you know, you, you do it in other ways, they don't get the word.
That's right.
But if we had somebody riding the bus and saying, here's, here's what we're going to do, and here's when we're going to do it, and what, what can we do to help you make sure that you get what you need to be there?
And Director Evans is here, along with her transit manager, so they will definitely make that happen.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
All right. And so, the final update tonight is a Monthly Finance Update by our Finance Director.
I'll be brief in this update here for the month of April 2021. So in terms of our revenues, if we're starting to the right of the snapshot, starting with the general fund, the general fund is up two point... the general fund is up two point seven seven percent for April two thousand twenty-one when compared to April two thousand twenty. This is largely due to the additional windfall that we received in sales tax revenue as well as additional insurance premium taxes and our title level, or taxes being up approximately twenty-six percent over where we, what we collected for two thousand twenty. If we exclude the unexpected sales tax revenue, sales taxes would still be up about nine percent. The general fund overall would be up about point five six percent when we look at what we've collected for two thousand twenty. There are some categories, obviously, that are, that have yet to recover, such as our fine and forfeitures, our culture and recreation fees. And, you know, as we continue to open up, obviously, and hopefully, we'll continue to see some rebound in those revenue sources. Our other local option sales tax fund is up nineteen point five two percent. Again, about nine percent if we exclude the one-time sales tax money. Stormwater fund is up five point five four percent. The paving fund is up six point seven eight percent. Medical center fund up four point six nine percent. All of those funds are funded by property, primarily funded by property tax revenues. Integrated waste is up twenty-eight point nineteen percent. And this large increase is due to the transfers into that fund from the general fund for those equipment purchases, those critical equipment purchases that were funded through the general fund. So that is why that increase is so large there. But if we were to exclude those transfers, the fund would still be up one point four two percent. The emergency telephone fund is down four point five one percent. This is not outside of our expectations. There was the cancellation of the Chattahoochee County answering point contract as of April first of two thousand twenty. So we did, we did expect it to be down just a bit this year. But still on track to be, hopefully, self-sustaining in the near future. The Economic Development Fund is up four point six nine percent. The Debt Service Fund is down thirty-nine point six nine percent. And this is due to the discontinuation of the subsidy that we had for the Build America Bonds when we refinanced those bonds back in two thousand nineteen. The Transportation Fund is up seven point four seven percent. This is largely due to receipt of CARES Act reimbursements into that fund this fiscal year. The Transportation Fund received a significant amount of funding through the CARES Act and the revenue increases that you see here is due to that. The Trade Center Fund is down twenty-nine percent when we compare April two thousand twenty to April two thousand twenty-one. Obviously, you know, there is some rebound that's happening in the events being held here at the Trade Center. But they are also directly impacted by the hotel motel taxes. Those collections right now are down about thirty-three percent for this same period last year. Bull Creek Golf Course Fund up eighty-three point three four percent. Oxbo Creek up one hundred twenty-nine point eighteen percent. And the Civic Center Fund is down seventy point twenty-two percent. Again, another facility impacted by the pandemic in terms of the event-based revenues also impacted by the reduction or the reduced hotel motel tax revenues. And although revenues are down, expenditures are down about fifty-two percent as well. Moving down the snapshot, as far as the revenues for the other local option sales tax Public Safety Fund, revenues collected year-to-date, just over twenty-four million. Expenditures year-to-date is twenty-two point nine million. For the other local option sales tax, tax infrastructure fund, revenues recorded year-to-date is ten point two million. Expenditures, nine point four million. If we move to the left side of the snapshot, we'll see here highlighted in yellow those departments in the general fund that are on our sort of watch list. The goal here is sixteen point six seven percent. And so for the City Attorney's Office, of course, we're still, you know, defending several millions in claims. So they're on the watch list this year. Hopefully, we'll, won't have that problem next year. For elections, still, they're still on the, the watch list here, still working out and finalizing, honestly, some of those grant expenditures. So hopefully, they'll just remain on the watch list. I mean, it's barely there at the sixteen percent, so they just barely missed the mark on, in terms of the, the goal. And then the Public Defender Monthly Contract is paid in advance. So we've actually finalized all the payments this year for that contract because they are paid a month in advance. So don't, I do not anticipate us being over budget in terms of, of that particular department. And that in itself is the finance update for the month of April two thousand twenty-one. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions? I don't see any.
All right.
Pretty good story. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, that's, that concludes my agenda.
Thank you, sir. All right, Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. For the clerk's agenda, the first item, we have a email correspondence from the Chairperson of the Public Safety Advisory Commission advising that the board has voted to request that the seat of Mr. Friar Danzewitt be declared vacant.
There's a motion to declare the seat vacant by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilor Thomas. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, it's declared vacant. Councilor Huff?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to bring to the clerk's attention, he had had some surgery and things and he's been ill. So that's why he hadn't been in contact. But he appreciates the time that he was able to serve. And I'll be coming back with another name next meeting.
Thank you, Councilor Huff.
Thank you.
Motion that the minutes are received by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Councilor Garrett. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Mr. Mayor, I do have two add-on resolutions to excuse Councilor Davis and Councilor Woodson from today's meeting.
Motion to approve both of those resolutions by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? Second, Councilor Crabbe. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Next, we have board appointments. Mr. Mayor, we have appointments for the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Commissioners. I did get in contact with Sharika Day and Jamie Waters. Both are interested in serving another term of office.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for checking with them. They're both, I'll reappoint both of them. Motion to confirm from Mayor Pro Tem, second from Councilor Crabbe. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, they're confirmed.
And then we just have Mary Ann Richter.
I'll bring you one for Ms. Richter and also for Deputy Chief on the Pension Fund.
Thank you. Next, we have council district appointments. Any nominations may be confirmed for this meeting for the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission. We have seats available for Council District Two, Council District Seven, Three, Four, Five and Eight. I'm sorry, did I say?
Councilor Crabbe?
Thank you. Sandra, could you help me out if possible? Someone reached out to me for this, for this appointment. And I have searched through every text, email, everything that I can possibly think of. And I'm hoping that he reached out to you also. So if you can help me with that, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, Councilor Crabbe, we'll take a look at our nominee application process to see if we have received any that have expressed an interest.
Thank you.
Next, we have council appointments. Any nominations will be listed for the next meeting. The Board of Family and Children's Services, we have one seat that's open for nominations. We have also outlined the nine categories that the appointee must fall in. For the Board of Water Commissioners, the seat of Reynolds Bickerstaff, he is not eligible to serve another term of office. Councilor Thomas is nominating Wes Kelly for this seat. And we will bring this back at the next meeting for confirmation if there are no further nominations. For the Board of Zoning Appeals, we have the seat of Charles Smith. Councilor Davis is nominating Sean Roberts to fill this seat. If there are no further nominations, we will bring this one back for the next meeting.
Hit you, but. Councilor Huff?
Yes, if we could send some type of letter or something to Charles Smith. He also was serving and had some health issues that prevented him from serving. But he also sent a thank you to the board for having the opportunity to serve.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilor Huff. For the Columbus Aquatics Commission, we have the seat of Brian Abada. The Aquatics Commission is recommending Chris Kennedy to succeed Mr. Abada. And we will bring this, I'm sorry. Oh, Mayor Pro Tem Allen is making that nomination.
Yeah, I'll nominate Chris Kennedy.
Thank you. We'll bring this back for confirmation at the next meeting. For the Keep Columbus Beautiful Commission, the at-large members, we have seats open for nominations for David Goldberg, Oz Roberts, Dr. Kendall, Fran Flucker, Orlean Bachman, Larry Derby and Courtney Loughlin. Councilor Tucker is nominating Alyssa Williams for the seat of Courtney Loughlin. And we will bring this back for the next meeting. For the Region Six Regional Advisory Council for Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities, Mary Ann Young has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on this board if a member of council wanted to make that nomination. Thank you, Councilor Crabbe. We also have Beverly Garland. She is not eligible to serve another term of office. For the Tree Board, we have two seats that are open for nominations, the seat of Frank Tommy and Troy Keller. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Is there anything else that needs to come before council? All right, we've got a request for an executive session on real estate, real estate acquisition. A motion to go into executive session made by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second? Second, Councilor Garrett. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we are in executive session.
We are out of executive session. We discussed real estate. There were no votes taken. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn from Councilor Garrett, second from the Mayor Pro Tem. All in favor? Ms. Crabbe, did, did you have something to say? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? We're adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.